So we're live right now, we're waiting for a special counsel assignment to appear and join us at the meeting. And so there'll be a few moments of customary dead space, dead time for the planning board.
I know it was on page five, line six, we should close out the parenthetical.
That's right.
We need the other one.
Yes.
I guess.
I wrote them up for you.
Yeah. Nick, which one are you looking at, the markup or the red line?
The red line version.
The red line version?
Yes, on page five, just to close out that parenthetical, line six.
See, I can understand why half of the parenthetical markers disappear when you have a three-line intervention, but it's kind of short.
So the board has just received some documents, we just received just moments ago, an updated report from Lieutenant Carroll from the Newcastle Police with regard to his observations out at the intersection of, well, the intersections, right?
Yes.
Roaring Brook and the entrance, as well as 117 and the entrance and Roaring Brook. And then we also have received an updated copy of the resolution and a marked-up copy of the resolution so that we can perhaps track it a little bit more easily. So that's where we are at this point. So Lieutenant, do you want to just quickly just run through your report? Looks like everything is set except for one issue, and maybe you could talk to us a little bit about that?
Yeah, everything has been completed. The request was that the language is two signs, 25 mile per hour, and then the other one said fines doubled speeding through the zone. The sign actually in place is roadwork ahead at 25 mile an hour. I don't think that's something that should affect your decision today, and they have been very responsive to make the changes. The only other thing that had come up was whether or not the traffic light had been activated in front of the school, and they're waiting for the timing from us, is what I'm told before, that that goes into effect. And they did, the crosswalk light is activated. It's not an all-stop though, as requested, and that was based upon DOT.
So you objected to that?
You objected to that, so when it's activated, eastbound traffic will be able to turn north and south from Roaring Brook onto 117, so it's actually stopping northbound and southbound traffic. Our big concern was the northbound lane going. Eastbound, it's much easier for pedestrians to see, so that's your concern. Traffic's been moving well. The only time there has been an issue is when there's too many vehicles trying to make a left. And this has been no longer than two light cycles, but most of the time, and that's just, I mean, three or four times. Modern traffic last night, no major delays, today it went smoothly. Six pedestrians crossed yesterday, this morning there was two kids and one adult during the peak times. School's been busy, as expected, from seven to eight, and then two to 3:15. No problems.
Question on page five, I don't understand why this happened, but it seems like it did. From the...
Can you tell us what line? Which number?
Page five, and starting at line 52.
Before, we should, I should spend some time going over this before we can get to line 52.
Okay.
Well, 52 is valid that we can't talk about off-site parking.
Well, I think what I would like to do is, now that I'm here, sorry for being late, would like to go through this, page by page, explain what's here, explain the changes, and then we can have a discussion on those changes that we got.
By the way, are there any questions at this point from Lieutenant Carroll from your board?
I did have one, it's about the crossing signal and the all-walk pedestrian phase. Is there a reason why DOT disallowed it, since it is something that will happen in the final traffic implementation plan, that there will be an all-walk phase at that intersection?
I don't know the reasoning, I was not involved in that conversation, I think, did you speak with them?
I did not speak with them, he spoke with my signal clock doctor, and I didn't get the reasoning other than they opposed.
And I don't know, was it all stop actually at the final phase? Or was that, I was suggesting that it'd be all stop at the final phase?
I thought it had been discussed that it was going to be an all-walk phase in the final, at the final intersection there.
Yeah.
Did I hear that correctly?
This is the cross.
I think that's what we wanted.
The crossing at 117.
Yes, that was going to be all stop.
That's going to be an all-walk phase, all traffic stopped.
Yes, once they get the DOT approval, that will then be.
Oh, it hasn't been approved yet.
It is subject to DOT approval.
The question was, in the original finding, was that the final solution? Or is this something we've just done the past month?
Well, I know that it came up recently in the discussion of the interim plan, I don't know what's in the final. Bob unfortunately isn't here, Sabrina isn't here, so.
We wanted it in the interim plan, that was based upon.
Right, and I thought we said it was in the final plan.
The final plan, I don't know.
We can check that, we have plenty of time between now and finals to work that out.
Confused, which traffic light are we talking about, the school one?
No, Route 117, the pedestrian crossing on Route 117.
We just have the crossing across 117, it's not going to be a crossing over to the sidewalk less side of Roaring Brook?
Correct.
Okay, so why is, what does an all-stop mean? You mean, no turn right, all traffic stops?
All traffic stops, people walk.
Pedestrian activated, walk signal.
All traffic stops.
Oh, okay.
Twenty seconds or thirty.
Okay, fair enough, got it then, thank you.
Sheila, what we can, as a counterproposal to DOT, we can ask them to consider a lead pedestrian interval, where it's not an all-stop, but at least it gives some green time to the pedestrians to get them positioned into the street. They get to lead for a few seconds so they can get in there, get established, before they release the traffic from Roaring Brook.
That's probably good if you're going from the west side to the east side, but if you're going to the east side to the west side, then you're entering that turning lane, just as that walk lead time would end.
But you'd be in their line of vision.
Okay.
But the turning lane was, I think, our, my concern.
The northbound left turn lane was the bigger concern, and we still have officers on scene until I say no.
Hey, don't forget Lou is still here.
Without the phone tied, it's hard to remember.
All right, so can we go through?
Sure.
The beginning, I think that's the best way to do it. At the top, we have some changes in personnel, we've had some illness and school trips, taking our usual people away from today's meeting, and other issues. So the beginning of the resolution tracks the planning board's history with respect to retail site plan development. It talks about the original site plan resolution in 2015, what that did, and then the amendments that took place in 2016, and 2017, and 2018, those are really historical, this is just what happened over that period of time. So that on page two, we begin to address the instant application from the applicant, the original correspondence from the applicant's law firm requesting certain relief, to amend certain conditions in three of the four site plan resolutions of the planning, but we missed one of them. But the 2015, 2016, 2018 had conditions that needed to be satisfied before a certificate of occupancy, permanent or temporary, was issued. The request is to modify those conditions in terms of timing so that a TCO could be issued prior to the satisfaction of those conditions. And then the next paragraph lists the precise conditions that the applicant is seeking relief from, from the various resolutions, and the following paragraph gives a description of what those conditions are. The red line in that paragraph is from Bob Siole, who wanted to be more precise in his, in the description of what those conditions required.
Right, and we received confirmation, I believe, from correspondence yesterday that DPW had signed off on these, Bill, you had signed off on a couple of things that were outstanding.
Yeah, that, these are still the ones that remain, and yeah, we've got, the late confirmation resulted in some late deletions of conditions that we had used as placeholders because they were no longer necessary. Okay, so that takes us, and then there's one of the, we had a real late entry, yes, the condition number 55, so that was originally requested for relief, and the town engineer advised that it's been fully satisfied, so just to note that for the record as well. Then the paragraph talks about, just gives a very brief summary of the instant, of the initial paperwork that was submitted. We've gone far beyond that, as you can see in following pages, a list of documents and revised plans that have been submitted, noting the fact that not only did the application go to the planning board, but also to the town board, because one of the conditions of the Fifth Amendment to their 2013 finding statement also required that the off-site improvements be completed prior to the issuance of a temporary C O or retail. So there are conditions with the planning board resolution and the conditions in the finding statement that need to be amended in some fashion to grant the relief that the applicant was seeking. And then the next paragraph talks about the history of the joint meetings with the town board and the planning board, and then updating some of the submissions on page four. And then the joint public hearing that was held on December 4th and December 11th by the town board and the planning board. Ultimately, that is closed, and at four, we talk about the town board adopting a resolution directing town council to prepare a resolution of approval for the application, same thing with the planning board. And there are the edits responding to Dick Brownell's request that we set forth a square footage for Whole Foods and Chase, so that's where it is. Then on December 13th, the town, which is yesterday, the town board adopted a negative declaration with respect to the deferral of the timing of the off-site improvements, and revise condition number 84. So, and the paragraph on page five shows you how condition 84 has been revised by the town board in its resolution last night. And that's taken verbatim from the resolution.
What's the substance of that change? Dick or less, what, I mean?
Sure, substance of the change is that the town board had a mitigation condition in its Fifth Amendment finding statement that said that the off-site improvements had to be implemented and constructed before the building inspector could issue any type of C O. So that was modified to provide that one could be issued if the town were satisfied with the MPT plan being implemented. And they made that finding yesterday.
Yesterday. So the town board adopted the resolution, okay, so that's where we got, that's what happened last night. I think there's a copy of the town board's negative declaration that's available. Then we get to the issue of the planning board's role with respect to off-site improvements. And I apologize for not bringing this up earlier, but sometimes the memory doesn't work as well as we'd like. So what we find on the bottom of page five is an excerpt from a prior town board resolution, which the planning board has been institutionally aware of, and has relied upon in connection with the adoption of its earlier site plan retail resolutions, that essentially the town board has taken away jurisdiction over the environmental review of off-site road improvements. They've taken it over from the planning board, they are the lead agency, they've asserted exclusive jurisdiction. You may remember that when we adopted negative declarations and finding statements in connection with the site plan approval, we didn't address off-site road improvements because we acknowledged that the town board had done this. So we've included the language from the earlier town board resolution, and that's what you find, I think, that you're directing the attention to, is a quote from a 2015 town board resolution with respect to the town board's jurisdiction over off-site traffic improvements. And that's why it's included in here. And then it continues over to six, by making its finding in the 2015 resolution and amending condition number 84 last night, the town board continued to assert its exclusive jurisdiction over the environmental review, and this board is bound by the determination of the town board, acting as lead agency, permitting the implementation of the MPT, making the finding that permitting implementation of the MPT plan will not have a significant adverse environmental impact. That's their neg deck from last night, so what I'm suggesting to you is legally the board is bound by that neg deck as to that element. The applicant needs additional relief from the planning board, which we described earlier, modification of certain conditions, but those conditions by and large are administrative in nature, and do not, and we are recommending the board consider a negative declaration for that portion of the application. Bound by the town board's neg deck on those off-site road improvements, the neg deck the planning board would be adopting would be limited to the remainder of the matters, the conditions that the planning board is agreeing to modify the timing of. And it says so in the resolution, I'll say it right now, the conditions of the existing site plan resolutions are not being changed in any way. They still are required to be met and satisfied, the timing is only that they're right now required to be met and satisfied prior to the issuance of a temporary C O. But none of those conditions are changed, the resolution makes that very clear at the end.
So procedurally for us, unless there are any other questions, or any other need to go through the files?
Well, might as well go through the rest of the wear in case there is anything, and then if you ask the questions, there's more documents that were submitted, more plans. Great job by the town planners office to keep track of all these as they come in, you know, some of them come in, you know, in light meetings. So then we reflect on the bottom of seven, top of eight, reports that were given yesterday by the town police department and the town's traffic engineer, they're here today, in-person reports.
Well, we also have a written report, so I guess we can just include that as well.
So you have a written report dated the 14th, so I like an add.
Yep.
Are we allowed to ask any questions about that?
Yeah, I'm just, right now I'm doing procedure, you can ask all substance you want. And I hopefully get to the end of the procedure, we are almost there. So add the written, dated December 14th, so we can add that to the wear of the clause. So I think that is the, basically the procedural setup, so I will then stop for a moment, and now Sheila asks her question.
I guess these might be questions to Lieutenant Carroll, because I had the opportunity to drive through the site last night after the police were off duty, and I just had some observations, and I don't know if they're for you or for the applicant, but a few things that I noticed. The lights at the, the construction lights that are at the Roaring Brook Road, the south, the east entrance, I thought they were angled into the driver's eyes.
Okay, I went out there with Lou, and we didn't see that, but.
Okay. The orange barrier on the east side of the road, when you're coming up to it northbound, it's very dark, does it need some reflective material to make it a little bit more visible?
We can certainly check on that.
There was a question, I don't know if I'm usurping your question, about why the decision was made to use a plastic barrier on the pedestrian side, as opposed to a concrete barrier that's on the other side, and what the filling is in that orange plastic barrier that makes it thick.
Yeah, I was agreed upon with the town's consultant that we could use the plastic, I believe right now we're filling it with sand or water.
Yeah, water.
Water.
It's not water, water, it's like antifreeze water. Antifreeze, but I guess the concern is, does it provide as much protection as the concrete barrier?
There was something we read about during stall removal, it may get moved, and is that because a plow's going to move it? Or guys going to move it? You know, I thought if guys can move it, then a plumber can move it.
The concern from the DPW department was that during plowing operations, the blade of the plow or heavy snow would push it down.
Okay. And they just wanted to make sure that it gets realigned.
Right, but their concern was greater with the plastic barrier than with the concrete barrier.
Yeah, concrete isn't, you can't move it.
Concrete's not moving.
Right, but so is there a reason?
Well, there was some concern with the bulk of the concrete, as I remember.
That's right.
Yeah, but with.
The slags, right, as a.
If slags have a safer.
Okay. The right-hand turn lane on the southbound approach is very narrow. Have we captured as much space there as we can, or is it still less than 10 feet?
It's more than 10 feet up to like the last five feet, and then it's nine, nine, and it does look very narrow on approach, and I thought when I first pulled up, when you actually get into the lane and get up front, you realize there's a lot of room to turn into westbound Roaring Brook Road.
Right, right, I just happened to, when I was coming through this morning, because I came through again at 12-ish or 12:30-ish, there was an extra wide load coming through the intersection at the same time you have people going through the right-hand turn lane, so. I just wanted to say, I know we're limited in what we can capture at that site, but I was just hoping that we had captured whatever we can.
The barrels make it seem more narrow, I think, when you wrap the.
Yeah, it's a feeling of a dead squeeze.
Yeah, well, from my former engineering observations, I agree with the lieutenant that when you see it first, it looks narrow, but since you have to slow down and stop, or at least slow down, then it's easier to navigate the nine foot nine inches and the three inches that are missing. I certainly didn't notice it when I made a turn last night on it.
And with regard to the orange barrier, also when you're at the intersection on Roaring Brook Road, one of the orange barriers has a huge enter sign written on it, maybe we should just flip that barrier in the other direction. Just inexplicable as to what that is.
Probably did, they said they'll switch that in advertising.
It's just like magic mark or something.
We'll turn it around.
Well, it wasn't written when my officers were there, I can tell.
So it's graffiti, is what you're saying?
Probably.
Yeah, well, you know, it can be fixed two ways, either black it out or just put, "Do not."
And then with regard to wayfinding signage on the site, I did come to the site through the west entrance, up the loop road, and when you're on the loop road at night, I couldn't find, or I didn't see any wayfinding signage to get to the retail area, which could dead-end you behind the auditorium, and I don't, I don't know if that's something that we can deal with in the near future.
It is there, if the wayfinding signs are installed for the plan right now, on the interior of the site?
On the interior, which I saw, which seemed to be geared more to pedestrians than they are to drivers, because they're high on the poles and the raining is quite small.
Well, and that's, that's just what was approved, those poles can only hold so much weight, so, but they're installed.
Right, but what about the loop road, where I didn't see any signage?
There's still some that need to be installed, but that's mostly for the office.
And didn't we get a comment back from the ambulance guys about just better signage, they know what building to go to? I think that's, yeah, I think that's what we're really focused on.
We provided the ambulance corps with a color-coded map, as we did with the police department, for emergency access. We've asked them to coordinate with our security people on site, so they can direct them, you know, because even, even if we direct them to the office building, it's still slightly confusing once they arrive. So, you know, we've worked with them on that, and we've met with them on site, and I have not heard any other comments back from them since we've met. But we're, you know, we can add additional wayfinding signs as needed as we move forward with the rest of the, you know.
Well, that would actually be a waiver from the conditions, because in the final conditions, we went through the wayfinding signs, there are stipulations and conditions in there.
I think they're hanging off the lampposts, but we may need to do lawn signs for a while.
In addition to supplement?
But when you're on the loop road, so say you're coming off the Selma Parkway, and you decide you're going to go to the retail via the west entrance instead of going up Roaring Brook Road, I don't, I couldn't see any signage that took you on the loop road in the correct direction to get to the retail site.
So we'll get some lawn signs or something until people start to establish the habits.
And as for the ambulance corps' concern, they have provided us with the security office number, and if there's any confusion as to where that we are going, they will meet us at the main entrance at any time, so. And they have provided maps, which are actually uploaded to our line patrol cars, so.
And just to add one more thing, is, you know, as Whole Foods opens up tomorrow, they will be putting temporary wayfinding signs along the west loop road, and, you know, all over the site, actually, so that will certainly assist until people become familiar. And breadcrumbs.
Well, you can only figure it out when the lights are on, because.
I was more about the ambulance and the fire guys. Customers will figure out what a supermarket is.
That was it, just a few comments, that's why we're at the site.
So, unless, I have a question for you with this, the one that we were just talking about, bottom page seven, it recognizes the town board's authority with respect to traffic, and ours, our, actually, they've captured that before historically, and it's something that's legislated, right? As a consequence of that, can you help me out here? Why can't we actually condition our approvals based on satisfaction of the traffic conditions? And why is any of this, I mean, it's been great to have.
Why is any of this relevant?
It's been great to have, it's been great, it's been great to have. It's been great to have the advisory position here, and I think we've been very, very helpful, and I'm sure everybody appreciates it. But why is it in our resolution?
You still have the condition that you have to modify that mirrors what was in number 58, number 84 of the finding statement.
This is a matter of course, because it's in our, it's in our matrix.
In other words, your resolutions took all the conditions in the finding statement and put them into the table. So you have the same language that is.
We have the same obligation.
Yeah, the same obligation, so if you didn't do anything, it'd still be sitting in the planning board's resolution with a proviso, no C O, until those are completed, so it has to be amended.
Okay, but with regard to the details of the traffic improvements, we really have nothing to say.
Yes.
Except on installation of wayfinding, I think that's the only one here.
That's onsite, yeah.
That we can talk about.
And I think, and as Tom mentioned, you've been extremely influential in the development of this plan. So it's sort of a hybrid situation. So I can then, you know, go through the resolved clauses, the changes that were made between yesterday afternoon and today because of the town board action, some of which will address certain questions that were raised by various board members this morning. Maybe if there's any questions on.
I got one.
Go ahead.
K, I don't understand English. Placement of the signal directing traffic light and activation of the cross signal when approved by DOT, which such approval shall be, I see, just expeditiously sought, and who knows when it'll come back.
Right, yeah, it's hard to control DOT.
Thank you.
One to sulk over this application. Anybody else's comments as you go through that? I look at O, and I think, Dick, your comment about striping, I attempted to add in O, installation of do not blockiness, X and signs and striping. It was a, a lot of material added about the applicant's participation in preparation of traffic reports, numbers two and three. And then number five, you know, reinforces the fact that, well, the assignment initially is through January 20th with the police. Should conditions necessitate, it can be longer, and that's going to be determined by the police department in this little discretion.
That's a question for you, procedural question. If and when there is an application for a subsequent TCO to the town board, it appears to me that whether we like it or not, we'll be dragged back into that because we're going to have to change the resolution once again to match whatever the town board's got in there in order for a subsequent TCO to be issued?
Well, are you talking about for additional retail?
Yes.
Or for this one?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that you'll have a role in that one as well, because this is limited to 43,000 square feet for Whole Foods and Chase.
Right, and at some point, it's very interesting thinking about this, I mean, substantively, I'm not quite sure we have any role, but procedurally, we have to change our documents, so I'm not quite sure we change the documents without participating.
And knowing upfront, you know, this may drive a different dynamic the second time around, am I not? I mean, I think it was, to me, it was very healthy to have the benefit of the expertise of the planning board involved with the town board, and the town board being very willing and open to accept it, I think it improved the nature of the discussions and then produced a better product, that's just one man's opinion.
On number eight, does placement of barrier refer to all barriers, concrete, plastic, and then the barrel?
I think that was the intent.
Yeah, we have additional language we would add there, that check placement of barrier on both sides of Route 117.
Good.
And those barrels too?
And the sand barrels, thank you, yes. So applicant will check placement of barriers, plural, on both sides of Route 117, including the sand barrels. including the sand barrels.
You could say barrier systems. I think the sand barrels would logically be part of a barrier system. Whatever you like.
It won't hurt to specify it. That was in the town board's resolution somehow and I missed that when I tried to transfer it, but we'll put it in there. Okay. There was a question about timing of the no construction, so there's a timing component in it now. There was a question also about, I think, maybe Dick, you may raise it, Greg, I don't remember, about special events. I think the town board has really addressed that more broadly. I think, Dick, you were suggesting that the limitation might not be as great because it can only be, we're worried basically about weekdays.
It's okay what you have here.
But, yeah, I think that they've already addressed.
This is, it's an improvement.
Yeah. And then we memorialize the obligation of the applicant for your best efforts to obtain additional property rights, create pedestrian walkway on the side of Route one seventeen from the pedestrian crosswalk to Annandale Road. And also the best efforts to get the county to relocate that bus stop inside the site into something this board has recommended a long time ago.
Does, do these three new things, which I think are great to have in here, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, will they also be subject to a weekly progress report?
Not as written, not as.
Not as written, but obviously there's no reason that we couldn't get.
Or a monthly.
I was gonna say, I don't know if that warrants weekly, but.
Yeah, establish some protocol for getting an update on that.
Because otherwise.
The bus.
The bus relocation, the acquisition of property.
Oh, just an update. An editorial? Yeah, sure, no problem.
Yeah, just a progress report. That may help you and your team too.
So to kind of do that by email to Jill or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have the copy. Keep the board informed. Eighteen and, eighteen deals with the insurance requirements.
But before we get off.
I'm sorry.
Thirteen. I, Mike, a question about the traffic study. That has to come from the plan, from the town board? The question I sent out this morning? Before we go into phase two, kind of regrouping and looking at a comprehensive traffic study, it takes in consideration everything with the project being full build because we've been doing these Band-Aid looks. And I don't know if anybody's adding up all the Band-Aids to see if it's going to make a bandage or are we going to find ourselves hemorrhaging with all these little looks at the traffic? And when this whole thing is all built out, we're going to go, oh, boy.
Well, we've done the.
And is this a town board thing?
Well, we've done the traffic for the final bill already. That's already been resolved. So then there's provisions.
But that was a study that was done many years ago.
Years ago, correct.
And through the conversations over the past month, we've learned a lot of things. And my question has been, is it, does that warrant a relook at that study to consideration things that we've heard over the past month?
Well, before we do that, I think there are provisions in this resolution that provide for additional reporting based upon actual conditions that are observed. So I think that data has to come in first before you ever consider the larger question. The larger question has significant ramifications. So I think this resolution provides for the necessary information and then based upon that, you can, you could raise it. And then we'd address the legal issues as well at that time.
My concern about that is that data that you just referenced, I still think that the existing data by which the town board, because they have jurisdiction in this or moving forward, I still think it's inadequate with respect to peak hour traffic and what people are actually experiencing out there. I'd like to see in the condition, apparently we can't, we have no authority to, unless I'm mistaken, no authority to insist on. But it'd be good to have in this condition for ongoing studies to have that, especially with respect to the activization of a second TCO, that that data be in there. And it'd be a matter of not just looking at the traffic counts for peak P, but direct observation of those conditions. Now, that's something I'd like to request. I've requested it for this phase and it didn't get in. I'd like to ask again that that doesn't necessarily have to be in this condition. It's up to you guys how to sort that out. But that going, as they say, going forward, that we have it, have it in the following actions that may be taken.
What might be, one way to do it would be for the planning board to develop a memo which details exactly, rather than trying to wordsmith it on the fly, determines what, exactly what you would like to see and send it to the town board and reference this condition. You're getting studies, we would like these to be included.
Fair enough. It's, it's two sentences. I mean, it's really, really, really that simple, right? I mean, it's, and I already put it in my comments.
I think in a planning board, it's a formal request to the town board.
We'll do that most.
But it's really, it's one of the crux issues about whether going ahead with a temporary TCO for phase two is warranted with the, with the road condition mitigations before they're fully built out.
Right.
So it's sort of one of the key issues.
And I think we've talked about those kinds of things that we suggest should be part of that study, whether it's the input from the police, the school, these kinds of counts, the peak that you're talking about, the neighborhood, the residents. All of this should be our recommendation through the town board and to our traffic consultants would be to look at all these things in concert with the applicant.
This, this may be in the same vein as we've just discussed, but if we go back to page eleven to item fifteen, the main reason that we're doing the pedestrian walkway on the, is it on the, on the eastern side? Oh, never mind, I think it's covered on the other side. Let me see here, just a minute, let me see if I got this. No. So it is expected work, that's all fine what we have, but one of the major secondary benefits is that in the construction of this, we'll automatically include the sightlines. And that's not in here, so, you know, it may require a little extra clearing or something like that to improve the sightlines. Because when you build the path, it goes into a swale. And something's going to have to be worked out with that to make sure that works. But still, you could chop down trees on the new property, you know, that either the town or the whoever owns. So where, should that be? Should that be in the memo we're talking about or?
Well, it presumes that all the prerequisites are taken care of, the properties acquired. I assume there'd be a plan developed down the road.
Absolutely does.
That'll have to be approved at some level before, you know, any work goes forward, so.
But it's, you know, I just want to make sure that if it does go forward, you know, that with a little bit of extra work that's required, the sightlines could be improved markedly.
I don't see any problem to include it in that memo as a thought. Just memorialize it. I think it's a great idea to do it. Okay. So I would say the insurance, the chair has kindly provided the benefit of his expertise in this area and has developed this provision, which has been reviewed by the town's insurance agent.
And the information provided, and I believe but for a couple last minute minor tweaks, has been reviewed by the town's attorney's office of all the insurance brokerings affirmed to be acceptable and provided.
Number nineteen is a defensive identification provision from the applicant in connection with the implementation of all off-site roadway improvements and modifications, temporary or otherwise, to Roaring Brook Road and/or Route one seventeen in connection with the Chappaqua Crossing retail development and the use or deployment of temporary or otherwise of traffic control devices, subsidence and barriers on Roaring Brook Road and/or and/or near Route one seventeen in connection with the retail development through the maintenance and protection of traffic NPT for retail development. And then there's in twenty, a recitation of the fact of SG's agreement to examine issues pertaining to Route seventeen, a section of Route seventeen north of Little World Road. And some of the concluding boilerplate is important, notwithstanding the temporary relief granted herein, no permanent CO shall be issued until the satisfaction of all conditions in the three site plan resolutions that we're amending, required to be satisfied prior to the issuance of CO. And no temporary CO shall be issued or renewed on or after six months from the date of filing of this resolution. So it's essentially a six-month grant.
The town board's done the same?
Yes. Except as otherwise amended, if all the provisions of the resolution stay in full force effect. The rest of the boilerplate, you've given me and others the ability to correct typos and other last-minute changes before filing of the resolution.
I might be wondering. Don't misuse that power.
I'm going to put this in every resolution.
Up to, but not less than, or not more than thirty pages of changes, right?
Is this ready to be distributed?
Yes.
So the first, I don't want to cut off discussion, so if there's any other discussion, I was just going to say the first order of business would be consideration of negative declaration. When you're ready for that, we'll pass something out. Just let me know.
I do have one point of clarification on the resolution.
Okay.
Even though there's no date for the opening of Whole Foods in here, am I correct in understanding that this is really a resolution that's meant to allow the opening of Whole Foods tomorrow, December fifteenth?
As phrased, it's on a Saturday, tomorrow's a Saturday, so yes.
As early as tomorrow.
Yes, as early as tomorrow. Okay.
Just trying to be precise.
Any other questions?
The only, the only comment I have at this point is that flabbergasted. And it's really disappointing that this is a meeting that's going to be done in less than one hour. So I think we need to extend it a little bit more so I feel comfortable about that.
Don't count your chicken. After the meeting, you can say. So I got to pass out.
We have a neg deck in front of us.
Can I?
Is that what you wrote ones in? Yeah, the short, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Is that what was, what I sent you?
That's what you sent.
That's the one the town board adopted. Now, I'm going to give you one for your consideration. This is different.
This is, it says Newcastle Planning Board is the name of lead agency, which is probably not correct. We're not, we're not the lead agency.
We are now. Typo. Do you mind passing what you have?
Use, yeah, use the latest version.
Give you back what we got before?
Yes, yes. We're changing it on the slide.
I don't even know which one is which now, the kindergartener.
Is this one that has one, two, three, four, five, and that's, five paragraphs? Shill of this one. Yeah.
Want to pass back?
The same one, yeah?
They've both had five. Okay, then they're both the same. And they both show us.
Yeah, okay, all right, all right.
Well, we are a lead agency for this.
Yes, you are the, no, you're not the lead agency for this. You're the, you're involved agency.
Right.
Okay, so let's see. On the, first, the flip side is part two. All right, thanks. Flip side is part two. None of the, none of these rise to moderate or large impact with respect to the administrative matters. And then the narrative at the back on part three, and I'll just go through it. SG Chappaqua B is seeking to defer the completion or satisfaction of certain conditions of retail site plan approval for the Chappaqua Crossing project so that retail occupancy can commence on the site provided that proposed maintenance and protection of traffic plan is implemented. Several of those conditions relate to the completion of off-site road work on Route one seventeen while others are administrative in nature. On May twelfth, two thousand and fifteen, the town board as lead agency adopted a resolution approving the preliminary development concept plan for an office park retail overlay district to Chappaqua Crossing and stated in paragraph H on page thirteen of nineteen as follows. Off-site roadway and traffic improvements the town board has through the secret process, the review of the related local law, and consideration of this retail PDCP, fully evaluated and considered the potential of off-site traffic impacts associated with allowing the proposed retail development of site. The town board has set forth below the off-site mitigation measures required to be implemented by the applicant, including any mitigation measures incorporated by reference herein to the town board's secret finding statement and not specifically mentioned below. The topic of off-site traffic impacts has been exhaustively examined by the town board and is fully addressed in the finding statement in this resolution and requires no further examination by the planning board. Accordingly, planning board review of traffic shall be limited to internal traffic circulation and parking. At its December thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen meeting, the town board issued a negative declaration and made a finding that implementation of an MPT plan does not have a significant adverse impact on traffic and will not affect public safety. The planning board finds that the deferral or completion of certain planning board conditions, primarily administrative in nature and mainly relating to providing as-built plans and bonds and the opening of Whole Foods and Chase Bank prior to completion of these conditions will not present any significant adverse impact. So that's the neg deck you're being asked to vote on, very narrow.
So, so it really does not relate to the timing of the opening, but just the satisfaction of.
The timing of the satisfaction of those before the issuance of the PDCP. So the first step in the process would be a vote to adopt the negative declaration.
Right, so is there a motion to adopt the negative declaration?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Having done that, the second step would be to consider the resolution with the amendments that we have discussed this afternoon.
Is there a motion to adopt?
I have some comments.
Well, why don't you go first?
Well, yeah.
No, I'm sorry.
I just have a, I just think this whole process has been unfortunate. And I think that we've, we've done a pretty good job of getting through it. I'm, I'm encouraged and satisfied that those things that are strictly on our table actually sort of got advanced quickly as a result of this. Otherwise, we'd still have that matrix with a lot of things. I'm guessing a lot of the things that are conditions that we had applied to a permanent CO would still not be, not be done. And I think that those have been wrapped up and I think that's good. I do feel uncomfortable, though, that I just get the feeling that, that things just didn't go the way they should have. And I understand that the, and I've said this before, that we're all sort of victims of the state's, the way in which the state addressed this particular problem in our town. I don't know the details of it. I have heard, but I'm not witness to that specifically. I understand that it's been difficult and it's put the applicant in a bind and the applicant and his tenant in a bind. Notwithstanding that, though, I wonder if we couldn't have managed this process better for ourselves because this street got opened and then we were presented with the problem of safety and the problem of, and, and all of the things that actually apparently are not our purview because they're related to traffic and intersections and so on and off-site improvements and traffic. But nonetheless, they're, they're something that's been put before the town to resolve. And I'm guessing that this is probably going to be the safest intersection in town for like a long time. I mean, we've got lights, we've got police out there, we've got people out there. We've got flashing signs, we've got all this stuff. This is going to be something which is going to be extraordinarily safe. But it just seems to me that, that we, we found out very late in the process, it's at least last Friday, or I found out anyway, that there was, that it takes eight weeks, we think, to get providers off the poles. And that's after Con Ed comes in and does their work to make the pole available to work on, get the power off the top so that they can start moving things. And if that's the case, it seems to me that we should have been, I'll take responsibility, that we should have all been alert to this condition of a fact of the sequence of the project. We should have been alert to that like in early October before the street was open and had an opportunity then to look at, well, this, if we allow the street, if permits get pulled, if we allow the street to get open, the consequences we're going to have are the consequences that are in front of us. And it's not clear to me that if we had looked at it and said, okay, what if, we say, instead of a hundred thousand square feet, what if we do forty thousand square feet? The conclusion we're at today, what would the consequences of that be before we opened the street? It may be true that, we don't know because we didn't look at it. But it may be true that we wouldn't have had to go through all of this, that we could have tested that and if it didn't work, we could use remedial action the way we're, it's all in the conditions here. If this doesn't work, we can use remedial action. So I think that there's a consequence of six months of living with this thing, as we've been saying, a temporary construction site with all these provisions in place, which maybe actually wouldn't have been necessary. And, you know, it's, it's too late now to go back to early October or mid-September to sort of look at this and predict and act accordingly. But I think it's, it's within town government to figure out what happened here. And. But I think it's, it's within town government to figure out what happened here and our responsibility too, although we aren't responsible to go out and manage and look at what's going on off-site on these pieces of property. I think it behooves us to sort of figure out what happened here and see if there's some way in which we could be more careful about these things in the future. I think it's unfortunate, I think it's unfortunate for the neighbors, I think that it's something that could have been done much better.
When you say we, Tom, you mean not only us, but the town too?
I'm talking about the town, capital T.
Okay, good.
I think we're sort of implicated, but not as much-
Well, we're advisors in on the bulk of this.
It's hard for us to be alert to what's going on. I mean, there are people who, who, I mean, there's a process of doing all this that we are not engaged in, which is construction and permits and so on and so forth, and it's proper that we shouldn't be involved in that type of thing. But I think that we're suffering the consequence, suffering is a hard word, maybe that's a harsh word, but we're, we're feeling the consequences of that and I think that the extraordinary measures we're going to now to make this place safe are the consequences that otherwise might not be necessary. Point is, we don't know, we didn't have a chance to know.
Okay. Good. I just want to say a couple of words too, which is at the Tuesday night joint meeting with the town board and the planning board, I spoke about some of my concerns about the timing of the opening and why I thought that we should wait until we have the school break to bring this online, given all the impacts that it could potentially have. But in spite of the fact that we have a very safe traffic mitigation plan that'll go into effect, but in spite of all those concerns, and nevertheless, I recognize that there's great, great excitement about the opening of Whole Foods and I for one want to welcome them to Newcastle and wish them every success with the launch.
Yeah, they were, last night, they were very excited. They were, I went there, couldn't buy anything, that was stopped at the door, but talked my way in.
Their people were driving up to the site.
They're very, they're very happy, they're excited and everything else. They asked, well, be nice to us, and I said, all I can tell you is, we'll be fair.
And you didn't buy anything, right?
I didn't buy a thing, no.
Good. Anyone else, anything? Okay, is there a motion to approve the resolution with the amendments that we've heard this afternoon?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any against?
Nay.
Okay, so the motion's carried, did you say?
I think you said aye.
I said aye, under the understanding that it has, this really has, we have no, we have no authority over the traffic situation.
It's clear as a resolution.
And I would have a different vote if we did, but we don't. And so it's based on the parts of our-
Our jurisdiction. We had the same, we had the same issue a couple of years ago.
We got, we did what was responsible to do, I believe.
And we did more than that.
So what I would like to say before, I want to recognize the planning board's incredible dedication in working on this. I'd always like to recognize the applicant's contribution and willingness to work with the planning board and with the town board on this. The staff support has been unbelievable, working night and day, seven days a week. Don and Lou have been fabulous people to work with, they also have been available, you know, seven days a week, we're having conference calls on Sunday, Lou's on the phone now when he should be, you know, more would like to be dealing with private matters. So, and then last, Nick has been a great partner. We have been working together on this for the duration and without, you know, that cooperation, it never would have happened, so.
And I'd just like to add to that, my thanks. It seems like we've been doing this forever.
You're doing every half a second.
But anyway, this, this, there was a lot of drama here in the last moment and I'm very grateful for all the extra hours. I know about the Friday meetings, I was involved in all of the Sunday conversations, the weekends, our construction guys were working night and day. Lieutenant Carroll, your interaction with them was usually helpful as we tried to figure out these things built, you've been terrific. Whole Foods, you've been semi-patient. Some of you more than others. But we, on behalf of all the people I represent, and more importantly, all the people I pay, which are more than I represent, I want to thank you, thank you very much.
And I forgot one person, Lieutenant Carroll has been-
Yes, absolutely.
-critical to this process and he has shared his time and expertise with us, it has been fabulous. Thank you for all your great efforts.
Yeah, in my next life, I'm going to come back as a traffic engineer.
I thought you wanted it.
No, no, heavens no, heavens no.
Everybody is.
I'm civil most times, but.
How many times have you used that line?
I haven't used it once in six years.
Well, this is for the best. Before this gets downright sloppy, is there a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.